Hey, wel- welcome to the East Brandywine Township Board of Supervisors Evening Meeting on Thursday, November 18th, 2021. Please note that a recording device will be in use during this meeting. I'd like us all to please stand to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the flag, United States of America. To your republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible and universal.
Thank you. Okay. For this evening, the rules for the conduct of public meetings established in a Resolution 2001-08. Time allocated to each individual making a comment shall be limited to three minutes, unless we otherwise say so. Additional public comment may be granted at the discretion of the presiding officer at the conclusion of the meeting. We don't have the session where it's...
So, so at this point, it'd be appropriate to call if there is anyone in the audience who would like to make a comment on agenda items.
I didn't see it on there. Sure. Anybody want to talk about agenda items? Carl? Come up to the podium to state name and address, please.
One item that I reviewed yesterday was that added to the, that number changed the fees for the solid waste fund?
Yeah, you're, you're a little ahead of the curve here. I will have a, I will have a PowerPoint presentation, and the final slide of that presentation...
I'm trying to get to comments.
The, the final slide of that presentation includes a, a summary of changes since the November 18 draft. So I did not reissue the budget, but I did note that you correctly identified a reduction in the transfer from the solid waste fund to the general fund representing administrative expense. And I will recommend that the board, if they are inclined to have a motion to authorize staff to advertise a preliminary budget, to note in their motion amending those two line items.
Carl, thanks for picking it up. Thanks for looking at the budget and picking that item up for us. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, Jason, next is the minutes of the previous meeting of November 4th, the morning session. Do you have any changes, modifications?
Nope, I'm good. I'll, I'll make a motion to the board to accept the minute meetings from November 4th AM session.
I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Treasurer's report, um, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at that, Jason? Treasurer's report?
Yes.
I've gone through and looked at the bills and authorized payment on my behalf. Are you okay?
Yes. Yep, treasurer's report, it's authorized to pay all the bills. I so moved.
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let's take a look at the reports, just kindly if the person would like to give their report, I would like them to, if they would so desire. Let's start with the Township Manager.
Sure. So this is a relatively late addition to your, your packet. As, as a matter of fact, when I delivered your packet, Chairman Winters, it did not include my report. So with your permission, I will summarize what's in the report. Okay.
Carl? Carl? I'm just going to give him Jason's copy. That's okay.
Yeah. First, I just wanted to note that staff has completed the application for public assistance available from, from FEMA for disaster relief.
Okay.
That application included the FEMA portal account configuration, submission of the request for public assistance, and the completion of three different forms. The next step is a recovery scoping meeting, also known as a kickoff meeting, which would be with township staff and PMA officials to assess the damage, and that has not yet been scheduled. However, we did meet the deadline for applying for public assistance. My thanks to Roadmaster Van Lou for his initiative in completing the application process. As a, as a means to kind of start a new tradition, on my packet tonight, there is photocopies of various correspondence we receive directed to, to members of the administration team and to the board, generally thank you notes. So I just wanted to share it in this format. The chief has long done this, and I'm shamelessly copying his practice. I, I want to note that there's some change in, in my thinking regarding the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. This is the COVID relief funds. Up to this point, I have been recommending that the board follow the Pennsylvania State Association of Township Supervisors' recommendation, which is to wait for the United States Treasury to issue a final rule before making decisions on making expenditures from this fund. I'd like to note that the Treasury has issued a statement recently, the, the gist of which is that municipalities and other grantees can rely on the interim final rule and will not be required to reimburse any funds expended, expended following the interim rule. With, with that in mind, I, I have two initial expenditures I would like to propose to the board at a future date. One is a transfer from the, the funds received from, from the, from the state, the federal government for, for COVID-19 relief that represents revenues lost due to the COVID pandemic. The interim final rule describes a method by which you can calculate how much revenue was lost. The period that I anticipate preparing a resolution for your consideration in December is for the fiscal year 2020, and it will be in the amount of $181,788. And I will be recommending that the board consider transferring that to the Capital Reserve from the funds from the federal government. That'll take the form of a resolution at a future meeting. Also, I would like to, the, the board to consider a upcoming proposal from Honeywell, which is our HVAC provider, for improvements to our ventilation system in, in a bid to make the public building a safer place to work in the, in the new world of aerosolized disease vectors. So that, that will also come at a future board meeting. I'm pleased to announce...
And that, that qualifies for reimbursement under those state funds?
Correct. The interim final rule states that expenses for the improvement of ventilation systems in congregate settings, including public health facilities or other public facilities, and a police station and municipal building would qualify, are eligible for reimbursement. I'm pleased to announce that we've received reimbursement from a, a portion of the work completed in Phase 1 and Phase 2 at the Bonsville Mill Project. It's too fresh to have showed up on your financials this evening, but yesterday we received $126,838. I think this is a milestone, meaning that, that our grant obligations have been met, and we're, it's no longer just money out, it's also money in from these grants. And I'd like to thank the grant writer, Hud Volts, for his work, as well as Lisa Vlitas in writing the reimbursement request. And of course, I'd like to extend my thanks to all the volunteers at Bonsville Mill for achieving this milestone.
This money then goes into either general funds or open space fund, I mean, or Parks and Recs fund?
It goes into the Capital Reserve, replacing the, it's the same place the money was spent from.
Came out of, yeah, that's why I just wanted to verify the fund.
Right. And there's also two upcoming events. One, this Sunday, we have a Historic Commission Speaker Series regarding Malvern's Duffy Cut Mass Grave. That begins at 3:00 PM. And then on December 5th, at 3:00 PM, there is a holiday tree lighting event in East Brandywine Community Park.
Two questions, going back to the state funds. We only got, looks like we only got, what, about half the state funds? We didn't get everything yet from them, right?
Are we talking about the, the, okay, the COVID money? Correct. So the current balance of funds in the COVID is $473,000, and that represents exactly one half of the total. The federal government is awarding those in two tranches.
Right, okay. Secondly, have they established a deadline date in which we need to show them that we're going to be able to spend all or some of that money?
We need to spend the money before December 31st, 2024.
Okay, okay. Great. And we don't have all the guidelines yet from the government in which to determine how to be able to use all those funds?
Correct. There are, the two areas I'm making a recommendation, I have a high degree of confidence, will remain in the final rule.
Okay.
And that would be ventilation improvement in public buildings and, and, and replacing our lost revenues from the COVID pandemic.
Okay, super. Good report, thanks, Luke. Yep.
My final question, what's your comment?
Sure. Can you go up here?
Yeah, just, just a quick question, I guess, for Luke. On that last month or last two months, we talked about the exact same thing for the HVAC for the fire station. Any comment as to that, I think, in relation to the township?
Meaning, spend the money for the HVA system in the fire department?
Yeah, the fire station.
Right. Do we, I mean, the fire department is considered part of the township, right?
It's a private entity.
So it's separate?
It's a private entity, public space in essence.
Right. Well, so, my response generally is, up until this week, my reaction has been wait for the final rule. So that explains why there have been initial conversations and nothing since. And the two recommendations that I'm giving the boards a head up, heads up on, there's no vote tonight, that I'm working on, amount to a total of $181,000 plus whatever the, our estimates for our own, for the, for the township buildings improvements is. I can guarantee you that will be less than the $950,000 award for COVID generally. I think that the, the board, I would recommend that the board do a comprehensive survey of the type of projects for which COVID money could be used. And I would submit that contributions to the fire company for improvements that are eligible for the grant funding should be on that list. But I would submit it should, we should do that comprehensively.
Yeah, sure. No, I agree. I mean, that, that's my only comment or suggestion for the board is, and I agree, you know, the comments you're speaking about ventilation for public spaces, I'm referring to last month. And so, you know, with the recommendation for that for the township and the police stations, I would ask the board to also, to make sure to consider that for the fire station as well.
Yeah, I, I agree. I mean, even though, yeah, quote, the fire department is a separate entity, be nice if potentially a legal opinion could be rendered to somehow find a way to do it, if, if possible, depending on what the final guidelines look like.
Right. If I could just shed a little more light on something that might change between the interim rule and the final rule. The interim rule states that in terms of infrastructure, what townships can spend money are water in projects, like public water supply, sewer projects, and broadband. So those are the three types of infrastructure that's in the interim rule. If by chance, the final rule also includes things like stormwater or road maintenance, I could assure you that, that the, the list of potential projects would go up exponentially. We, we have less need for projects related to broadband, public water, and public sewer, and we have a huge range of projects related to stormwater and road maintenance. And that was the primary reason why I was encouraging us to wait for the final rule.
Yeah, okay. Again, my comment is just public comment, the same things we're applying for, for the public space of the township and the police station, I'm just asking or suggesting to the board, keep in mind the, the very public fire station as well.
Thanks, Ken. Any need for building inspectors' report?
I can read it if you're inclined, otherwise we just accept it.
Nobody, nobody's interested, there's no need per se. Matt, any interest in, in any items in your report you'd like to talk about, or no?
Sure. First thing is Aspen Drive paving project is moving along. In fact, we expect that to be completed tomorrow. So that, that went along quite well. My, my next item was Hurricane Ida, but Luke covered all of that. And the third item I have is recently we were contacted by Davy Resource Group, which is a company that's doing the tree removal for Pico. They've advised us they will be removing 51 trees and underbrush at 475 Creek Road, which is the old Wesahickin Water Plant, which is now owned by the township. And this work is to upgrade the Pico system along Creek Road. They've been doing this through other areas in the township, and now they're getting to Creek Road, I believe.
Okay. I've heard, I've heard some people talk about it. I guess it's not in our township, but the development that's just below us on 322, are they doing blasting at all hours of the night? I mean, I've heard some comments about residents. Is that, is that what's going on with blasting?
Yeah, I'm not aware of that.
Aware of it, okay. Just curious.
Might be hunters, too.
Might be hunters, too?
Might be.
Okay.
There is a, a pipeline immediately adjacent, so I'm, I'm sure that, that any review for blasting is subject to the strictest scrutiny.
Okay.
But it is a different township.
Right, right. Okay. Chief, do you like to comment on anything?
Sure. Our police department report for the month of October 2021. Part-time police officer Christopher Fox has been sworn in, has completed all of his hire requirements, and received his MOPAC certification last week. Christopher has been assigned to the department's field training program, and he will continue in that for the next three months. The police department's Toys for Tots campaign has begun, and we will be collecting new toys through Thursday, December 9th. The boxes are located in our vestibule and in the township lobby. All of the toys must be delivered to the drop-off location by Friday, December 10th, so we're asking anyone who wishes to donate toys to try to have them in our lobby prior to the 9th. During the month of December, the police department will be participating in the Park of Recreation Christmas Tree Lighting Ceremony on December 5th. We will be assisting in the escort of Santa and Mrs. Santa to the park. I should also note that Parks and Rec will also have a Toys for Tots box at the park during that ceremony, so if you'd rather bring your toys to the park, they'll collect them for you. We will also be participating in the Danington High School's Connection Group Color for Kindness Event at the Brandywine Wallace Elementary School on December 8th. This event, in conjunction with the Chester County Food Bank, is being held at the school district's elementary schools. Everyone will be making Christmas cards and decorating boxes, which will then be filled with food and delivered to the senior citizens throughout the county. I'm going to move my comment item up to item number five. I just want to inform the board, we've been notified by New Holland Ford that our, the 2021 police vehicles that we ordered earlier in the year have finally been assembled and are in transit to the dealership. We're hopeful that with no other delays in getting our equipment for those cars, that we might be able to have them in service by the end of the year.
They do all the additions that you need on the vehicles, or is that somebody else?
They go, they go to New Holland Ford Prep, and then they go across the street to a company called 10-8, and that's the upfitting, that's putting on all the equipment, goes back to the dealership, and then delivered to us. And then finally, we, we have been notified by Officer Lindsay Taylor, she is one of our part-time officers, that she will be leaving us at the end of the year. She has been offered a full-time position with Upper Euclid Township, and she notified us that she has accepted that position. So we're sad to see Lindsay go, but...
Part-time or full-time?
She was part-time here.
Part-time, yeah.
For the month, we had recorded 2,238 events for the township. We completed 231 investigations. We had six criminal arrests, one summary arrest, two warrant arrests. Department investigated eight traffic accidents. We issued 135 traffic citations. We issued 71 traffic warnings, and officers logged 9,954 miles of patrol. There was no training completed this past month, and you have copies of the monthly investigations and the officer activity reports.
Curiosity question. Somebody blew through the fence right in front of the Rite Agency? Is that an auto accident, or no?
Was that an accident?
Fence is all down, was an auto accident.
Yes, the property, there was another fire there as well. There is an auto accident there.
That somebody just went off the road, right through the fence?
Fire hydrant fence.
Wow, okay. Thanks, Chief.
You're welcome.
Like to hear from my cousin Vinny, next.
All right. Well, I'm glad I could be here with you tonight. Joe is away in North Carolina. So the fire company's report for the month of October, we had a total of 50 incidents for the month. 26 of those were fire-related, 24 were medical. In East Brandywine Township, we had 10 fire calls and 16 medical calls. In West Brandywine Township, we had 10 fire calls and eight medical calls. We had an average number of 10 people per call, which is really good these days, so most people are struggling to get five people, so we're doubling those numbers. Our fuel usage for the month, we used 144 gallons of East Brandywine Township fuel, 113 gallons of West Brandywine fuel, for a total of 256. We had no fires, no injuries or fatalities for the month. We had a, three trainings during the month of October with 15 people in attendance at each event. Obviously, the, the big construction project down the street is starting to progress rather rapidly. All the contractors have pretty much been working really diligently to get the fire station sealed back up, so we can get the trucks back inside with the colder temperatures that are coming in the next couple of weeks. So Friday's deadline will be met, all the trucks will be back inside minus one, which is huge for us over the course of the winter. The masons will start working on the exterior facade, all the brickwork and metalwork will start to go up. But all the new roofing material's been installed, so we're not getting any infiltration from the roof anymore. And then they'll, they'll start getting the inside all framed out and dry-walled up, and we should be ready to go. So hopefully, by this time next year, it's done, and maybe we could have a meeting there or something upstairs. So you guys are welcome to come down and take a tour whenever you guys want. I know West Brandywine Township Supervisors are coming down December 8th to take a tour of the construction and get an update. We've improved the structural stability of the building, so we feel no safer having guests and visitors take a walk through the building. So we, we can get a date lined up if you guys, you know, so choose to come down. Carl, you're one of the welcome to come down as well, too.
I've actually taken a tour already.
Well, there's been, I'm sure there's, from which?
I've had a lot of changes since, right?
Right, since you were there, we got...
It was a little scary taking it the first time.
Yeah, now you can stand in one side of the engine room and look all the way across and see the other edge of the building, so it's, it's kind of cool. So, yes, sir.
Because you're under construction, is the Christmas party for kids off?
So, yeah, so really, all of our external and internal events have really been postponed. One, due to COVID, and then two, just because of the situation with the station. So there's no breakfast with Santa this year, there's no members' Christmas party. So we'll get all that pushed out on our social media outlets, because we've already had a couple people email us and ask when the breakfast with Santa day is. So it's unfortunate that it's two years in a row we won't be able to have it, but I'm sure once it's done, it'll be, it'll be a big hit, so.
Any other questions? Thanks, Chief.
Yep.
Hey, Jason, I'd like to make a motion to accept all these reports, the five reports on the agenda.
So moved.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye. I do have, I do have a comment, though, for Vince, Vinny. I heard there's a rumor, I heard, I don't know if it's true or not, that West Brandywine, they're bringing down a donation check?
I don't, I don't know anything about that. If they are, we should get a convoy of armored trucks.
Okay. I didn't know if that was true or not, I just heard it.
I don't think so, but if they are, that means you guys have to bring one, too.
Okay, old business, I'll turn it over to Luke.
Please stand by while I queue up.
Okay.
All right, so I've got a PowerPoint loaded here. Apologies to everybody who is joining remotely and can't lay eyes on it. The, the first slide here is a review of the, the 2022 budget process. We are now at the, the point where the action item is for the board to consider authorizing staff to advertise a preliminary budget, so that a vote can be taken at your December 16th meeting to adopt a final budget. The next slide kind of summarizes what happened at the last meeting. "On November 4th, the Township Manager made a presentation of a draft budget and solicited the board's feedback. That draft represented the Township Manager's requests and those of department heads and committee chairs after the manager had exercised some discretion in paring down the requests. The budget at that time was balanced and written as though your answer to all the critical decision points that I went over was yes. The draft that's before you this evening incorporates the consensus feedback I received from members of the board. It is again, it is again balanced in its current form." And the next slides will revisit the decision points and some other changes that have happened in the draft that's before you. So here are the, the 14 decision points that were discussed and the, the resolution to each of them. So I'll just work my way down the list. The proposed general fund tax increase has been removed. The proposed fire services tax increase has been retained. The non-uniformed cost of living adjustment of 3% has been retained. The part-time administration employee going full-time has been retained. The new administration team hire was eliminated. The new public works hire was retained. The public works proposal to promote one of the laborers to foreman was retained. The, I'm going to, since it's, it's a complex plan, the, the police department's personnel plan as presented was retained. The capital expenditures for the public works utility trailer was retained, the public works large truck was retained, the public works fuel system was retained, the public works gator was eliminated, and the placeholder for a future public garage extension was eliminated. Also, the Bonsville Mill capital budget...
Excuse me, excuse me, one second?
Sure.
Are we going to discuss this afterwards, or?
Um, it, yeah, I'm, I'm, if, if, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I, I'd like to summarize everything that's changed, and then I'll, I'll turn the, the entire conversation over to the board.
Okay. Sorry for interrupting.
No, that's no problem. Thanks for your patience. And then, as I indicated, the Bonsville Mill capital budget was retained as presented. So in addition to those things that were presented to the board as decision points, there were two changes that were, were noted on the 20, on the November 4 draft that have, that are, that are different, that weren't part of a decision. Among them is that astute reviewers of the November 4th draft correctly identified that something seemed amiss about the debt service payment shown in the general fund. At the time, my response was, I need to look into it. With the help of Supervisor-elect Carl Crofton, we identified the error, and that was that I assumed that all debt service for the new 2021 bond issuance was paid from the general fund, and that was incorrect. Portions of the debt service are paid from other funds, and therefore, that figure was high and has been amended down. The second thing is, in light of new information, the non-police health and prescription premium expense has been revised higher on what we now know as the total number of individuals who will be added to the plan and on new premiums. who will be added to the plan and on new premiums. So, that figure is higher. And then I want to summarize a change that's already been notified, that has already been caught in the November eighteen draft, and that is that one of the transfers from the solid waste fund to the general fund, representing payment of the administrative costs of the solid waste program, was reduced in error. So, at, at this point, when the board is ready, it would be appropriate to consider a motion authorizing staff to advertise this preliminary budget as available for online inspection by the public. I think that that motion would reference any changes to line items that you would like to make from the draft as it's in front of you. And, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions about the board, the board may have about the, the budget.
Jason, it sounded like you had a question?
Uh, yeah, I actually, I think that as far as the, the large truck, I want to discuss the, the public works large dump truck purchase as well as the promotion. I don't, at this time, I don't think that, I mentioned more thought, I don't think that I'm okay with the promotion. I think that I would like to just keep it a hire, just to give the township and the, and the department some flexibility, and as well as the large truck, although we got one two thousand and eighteen, and the one that we have, another one needs replaced. I don't think that, that that would be appropriate at this time. And I wanted to have one more question about the, actually, I answered that already myself by doing a little research, so. That, that's thirty-two points I'd like to, to talk about with, with the board. So, George, I don't know where you stand as far as the, as far as the large truck purchase. I guess Kyle's not, I think Kyle was okay with it originally.
Yeah, the budget is about, is about...
I don't know where you stand.
Right. I mean, I was, I was in favor, I don't know how the votes came out, but I was in favor of giving, of having, putting in the budget. Once again, to me, the board will decide next year whether to make that hire or not, but I was in favor of putting an additional public works hire in the budget, but I was not in favor of the promotion at this time. So, I, I guess in that way, I do agree with you, if that's what you're saying in that regard.
Well, as far as, I don't know, yeah, I don't know where everyone's at. I just, I know that originally, I was for the, the new designation of the employee, but after additional thought and a little bit more time, I just, I, I wanted to actually change. But I initially had, had thought that my recommendation was going to be, that's all. I don't know where you guys are at. So, I would like to do away on my, on my own, as far as my, where I, my opinion, I'd like to do away with the, with the, the, the actual new position as far as the designation of foreman. I'm not opposed to a new hire.
You're not opposed to a new hire?
Correct. I just don't want any, any additional...
You're opposed to the promotion?
Delegation within, you know, new, new, new names, you know, to positions without actually understanding what, what each position is going to be doing in the future.
Right.
So, I just, that was one thing that I'd like to change as well, the, I don't think at this time, with, you know, with, with COVID and everything else, I don't think that, I think that I'd like to try to go another, another year without a new large dump truck purchase.
Well, what, Luke, what happens if we pull the large truck out of the budget? It's just money that would go to capital funds? Is that what happens?
Right. Yeah, so...
Is the large truck paid out of another fund?
Yeah, that, that's, that's exactly...
Out of liquid fuels?
So, you know, the, the line items that are referenced on this...
Right.
Anything that starts with nineteen is, is a reference to a capital fund.
Okay.
So, whereas, anything that starts with an O-one is a reference to the general fund.
Okay.
If you can think in terms of budgeting that, that the O-one expenditures are use it or lose it, that's the general fund.
Right.
Because the balance is not rolled over.
Right.
The, the opposite true is in the capital fund. If, if revenues are not spent in the capital fund, the balance remains earmarked for public works.
So, basically, by putting a large truck in the capital fund, it'll be up to the board next year, at the time it comes up for request, to decide whether to use it or not. There's no harm keeping it in the capital fund right now.
Yeah, virtually, everything that's a decision point...
Right.
Is a matter of, yeah, I'll stick with virtually. Almost all of them require additional action by the board prior to that expenditure.
Right. So, putting it in doesn't, doesn't require anything, it's just saying it's there, and the board will decide if they want to go forward with it. So, I have no problem, Jason, keeping it if that's the case, because it's not in the general fund. But I do agree with you that there's certain items that, to me, need to be proven before they go into a budget, particularly a hire or something, and I do agree with you. I did vote against a promotion at this time, not understanding the basis for a promotion.
Yeah, that's fine. And I'm, and I'm fine with, you know, now, understand that's in the capital. I'm, I'm fine with keeping the, the large truck in there, but as long as the board next, you know, next year had an option to revisit that, which sounds like we will, so. But as far as the, you know, as far as the, the new foreman in, in the crew, I think that, you know, without looking at the performance reviews and whatnot, I don't know, you know, I, I just don't think that would be, right now, I don't, I'm for just, just the things as they are, just hire another person.
Okay. Do we need to vote, or do we have an agreement? Do we have to vote on these two items as a board?
Right. So, at this point, the, again, revisiting the next slide, the, the, the motion would be to authorize staff to advertise this preliminary budget as available for online inspection and for inspection at the township office...
Okay.
With the following changes.
Okay.
One, line item O-four, four-nine-two-O-one should read a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and the corresponding line item O-one, three-five-seven-O-five should read one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And, if I understand it...
Right.
The, the, the line item associated with an increase in salary, representing a promotion of a, a public works employee to foreman...
Right.
Be removed.
Right. Okay. You have anything?
So moved.
Is that good enough, I said, or do I have to repeat it?
Actually, so my advice is, you don't need to repeat my motion. I, I would, however, ask that, that prior to a vote, you ask for public comment...
Okay.
On, on a lot of that. So, the, the motion, as stated by me, was, was made...
Okay.
By Jason, and is it seconded by you?
It's seconded by me.
Okay. And, and I think, because, yeah, because this is going to be a surprise to, to anybody who didn't have this draft in advance...
Okay.
I'd, I'd suggest...
Floor is open for public comment? Any comment at all?
I agree, excuse me, I agree with the decisions out there. I will tell you that I do support the promotion to a foreman. I have, at the back, I don't understand what purpose that is, but you're right, it's the next board, next to the bodies.
Right.
Advertising this one.
Okay.
I would like to make one other comment, just to go along, is that the quick work done, budgets, budgets ahead. I know we didn't have a budget committee, you know, we have a committee of one, we need, we need to look at it, you know, that's just one person. But township going forward has to recognize that they need to, and I'm really happy we have a balanced budget with the tax increase, and that's what we...
Is there a comment?
All right.
He can't. Jason can't hear because, due to...
Yeah, we've got a little technical, technical issue with the wireless mic.
Oh, okay, I know, we're waiting on someone, or, I didn't think there's that many people...
There it is, he just changed the battery. Okay. Can you hear me now, Jason?
Yes, I do.
Okay. I was just talking about the capital, the nineteen accounts. There's, there's nothing, there's nothing in the general fund budgets that's being transferred to future capital needs. And that will be decided at the end of the year, and I, I saw Luke put up that there is a capital transfer scheduled for early December. Right. But the township has to recognize that if you, in, in, in budgeting for capital expenditures, you've got to spend at least five percent of your general fund budget. That's approximately three hundred thousand dollars a year. That's assuming every asset lasts twenty years, and that doesn't happen. The cars, the trucks don't last twenty years.
Mm-hmm.
The buildings do, but they need capital items, they need heating...
Worked on.
Heating systems replaced. Most, most municipalities and governmental units look, look to be closer to a ten percent budgeting. It, it depends on your resources, but the township's resources are limited, so I hope that when you, when you look at your public capital accounts, you keep that three hundred thousand dollar in mind, because that's pretty much the minimum.
I agree.
All right, thank you. Okay.
So, there, there was a, a motion made and seconded, and, and thank you for, for allowing comment. I guess at this time, it would be appropriate to vote.
Yep. Jason, all in favor of this motion that was just made?
Uh, yes. Aye.
Aye. Okay. New business? Luke?
Yeah, so I had indicated in the, in the budget presentation that we had received updated figures from our health insurance provider, which is the Delaware Valley Health Insurance Trust. Included in your, in your packet is, is the updated prices, as well as the, the, what they call the rate stabilization fund. It leads to an overall decrease in the, the premiums for health and prescription funds. There is a decision point, however, and that is whether to renew with them for one or two years. And my recommendation to the board is to consider appointing them as, is signing up for two years.
And the rate is locked for two years by doing so?
That is correct.
And this year, there was a premium decrease?
After the application of what they call the rate stabilization fund. So, so Delaware, Delaware Valley Health Insurance Trust is a consortium of municipal, municipal...
Municipal townships.
Yes, and, and so the, the premium savings are reapplied in, in subsequent years.
I think with that in mind, from what I've seen, I, I concur with Jason's recommendation to do a two-year, to do the two-year option. What's your thoughts, Jason?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Okay. I'll make a motion to adopt a two-year option for DV Health Insurance Trust on the renewal for a two-year option. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Jim, you're on the agenda next.
Yeah, Jim, I, I put you on, on, on the spot, the, the...
I thought Luke was going to cover this, but that's fine.
Oh, you got a speech ready. I see that.
No, this is, this is just, this is just the quotes. I am going to ask for approval to approve the expenditure for a well installation at Bonsville Mill Park. It is part of phase two of the garden project, part of the infrastructure for the, for the garden. It, it will supply the waters needed for the, for the garden. It was budgeted, and it will be covered by grant funds in the end. We got three phone bids. The lowest was from Petersheim Brothers for fifteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars. The other two bids were from Sensing and Weaver for sixteen thousand one hundred and fifty-four dollars, and the third was from Keys for eighteen thousand five hundred and eighty dollars. As good luck would have it, Petersheim is the preferred vendor, and they are also the lowest bidder. So, I ask approval to expend fifteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars for the well installation.
Okay, so one, this was budgeted for this year?
Yes.
Coming out of general or capital?
It's coming out of the capital fund.
Okay.
It is being tracked under grant reimbursables, and in the end, it will be covered by, by, by grant money.
By grant money will pay.
So, next year, when we ask for reimbursement, the money will be going back into the capital fund.
Okay. Jason, any questions?
No, I'm okay with it.
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept the Petersheim Brothers bid of fifteen thousand eight thirty-five towards the Bonsville Mill project. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Thanks, Jim.
Okay, Luke, back to you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to first verify. Mark, are you still available?
I am indeed.
Okay. Have you, have you heard back from PennDOT as to who must be an applicant for sewer project?
No, but actually, well, I heard back, but not in a conclusive way. The response I got from PennDOT was that, it was sort of like where you and I were. We understood that the process might apply to storm sewers, but sanitary sewer was actually something that the gentleman from PennDOT District Six was going to look into, so he's going to get back to me on that.
Okay, so, so now that we've had that conversation, I'm going to clue in everybody else. Thank you for that research. We have a request from the developer of what is now known as Brandywine Walk to execute a form from PennDOT that authorizes their transportation engineer to act on the township's behalf in getting a highway occupancy permit to build sanitary sewer improvements in PennDOT's right-of-way, as shown on their, their preliminary plan that was approved by the board. It is the applicant's assertion that for improvements, sanitary sewer, that the municipality that will own that those improvements needs to be the applicant. And per Mr. Jonas's research there, we, 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 staff and legal can't verify that as a fact at, at this point. So, my, my suggestion respectfully is to, to table this? But the, the request is to, would, the motion, had we been ready, would have been to authorize the township manager to execute this PennDOT form, allowing transportation, planning and design to act as the township's agent in an, in an application to PennDOT.
Okay.
Fair summary, Mr. Jonas?
It's, it's a fast summary. I think it'd be fair and efficient to go back to the developer and say, you know, provide the township with some authority for, for this requirement, statute or, or code of regulations. And the other part I'm thinking, as I'm listening to you, Luke, is that if the, if this is PennDOT's requirement, then we might want to think about some agreement with the applicant to make sure that the township is fully protected.
Okay, so at this point, we will table this item as your, per your recommendation. Okay, Ja, hey, Jason?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I would like to just follow Mark's advice.
Okay. Let's do it. Public comment on non-agenda items? Nobody from Oakwell?
No, no.
Upcoming?
Okay. Do, do, should we note for the record that the, the published agenda had anticipated a conditional use hearing decision, being in, in the application of ELU Plainbrook-Guthrieville?
Okay.
We had anticipated having an announcement there. The applicant has provided the township written extension of the deadline required to issue a decision in their conditional use hearing to December sixteenth, which is the date of the second December meeting of the board supervisors.
Right.
is really hot off the presses. Under the section, under notices, I I I would like to note that the the board of supervisors met in executive session yesterday, um, uh, for the purpose of, um, uh, I I I think legal matters is the correct answer there. Mark, how would how would you phrase our notice of the executive session?
I think legal matters is is accurate.
All right.
Okay. Once again, if if there's no further public comment on non-agenda items, I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you all for attending, appreciate it.